Okay, let the record reflect that we have reconvened with all members present virtually. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also want to take a moment for a moment of silence for two longtime Madison residents we lost in the last two weeks. Lucia Picaro, longtime Madison resident died on Tuesday, May 18th, at the age of 80. She was born in Naples, Italy on September 4, 1940. And Lucia and her mother emigrated to the United States when she was 14 years old, settling initially in Scranton, Pennsylvania with her uncle. And after the rest of the family reconnected with her mother and her in the United States, most of them relocated and settled in Madison where she has lived ever since. She attended St. Vincent Martyr School and lifelong parishioner of St. Vincent Martyr Church. She had met her beloved husband, the late James Picaro, on the Circle Line Cruise in New York City, and the two became inseparable and were married on July 23, 1960. He worked as a cafeteria worker at Exxon Corporation in Florham Park. But her most important job, as it said in her obituary, was as a loving wife and the world's best mother to five children and mother of 12. She is predeceased by, in addition, her parents predeceased by her husband of 60 years, James, and she survived by three sons, James, Madison police officer Carmine, and Alphonse, and two daughters, Antoinette and Lucille, and 12 grandchildren. Also, on May 18th, Santo Lascari of Madison passed away one month before his 102nd birthday. Born in Lodi, New Jersey, to late Salvador and Nina Lascari. He settled in Madison for the majority of his life. And Carmela, Kylie, and I were able to attend his 100th birthday just about two years ago to present it with a proclamation recognizing his century. I'm married for over 68 years to his beloved wife, Madeline. Together, they raise a family. And he was predeceased by Madeline. And Santo is survived by his three children, Salvador, Roland, and Sandra, who also serves on our Board of Health. Yes, she has six grandchildren and leaves five great-grandchildren. He was known as a sharp dresser, worked for Evan Picone, among other clothing manufacturers, and was known as the best dressed man at St. Vincent Martyr Church. He was a longtime parishioner. So let's take a moment to remember Lucia Picaro and Santo Lascari. And let us pass our thoughts on to the families and the friends they leave behind. Thank you. Have a motion for the regular minutes of March 8, 2021.
So moved.
A second? Any discussion, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of April 12, 2021.
I'll move them.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
And executive minutes of April 26, 2021. Motion? Got a motion there, thank you.
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're on a roll here, regular minutes of April 26, 2021.
I'll move them, but there is a correction. A number was wrong, saying the tax increase was $400 and something odd dollars for the average house. It's $4 a month for the average house. That's a significant difference.
Yes, thank you. So thank you for that correction. So do have a second?
I'll second with the correction.
That correction. All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the executive minutes of May 10, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then a motion for the regular minutes of May 10, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
And we also have a correction with this one related to a decimal point. It was 100 Asian-American families, that should be 1,000. Is that correct, Rachel?
Persons, yes, individuals.
Persons, yes. Okay, thank you. So that correction will be in there. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. And let me get to comments here. Sorry, I'm managing with the hold on a sec. As we know, that limits on indoor and outdoor gatherings are being lifted, so we can look forward to in-person meetings resuming. But as I stated previously, we are planning to return to the in-person format in September to the council chambers. This will allow us to finalize a new live streaming stream method and also allow us to get through the summer vacation season. I also expect some guidance coming from the state because we're not going to be able to just shut off the spigot and go back to the way it was. So there will be some, I'm sure, some guidance as far as when Zoom is appropriate and so on. So there'll be a lot of work to do. So as you go off on your summer vacations, whether you're elected official or one of our residents, you are able to stay connected to our meetings all the way through. And we'll be live streaming when we go to in-person the fall. But in the meantime, just don't forget, we are still in a pandemic. So if you're not vaccinated, two important things to remember. Continue to wear your mask indoors and please sign up for vaccination. You're taking care of yourself and you're taking care of others. And other things going on, on the day, May 17th, I visited St. Vincent Martyr School to present Principal Sister Noreen with a proclamation recognizing her 10 years of leading this school in education excellence and not to mention managing through the pandemic of the past year. So we really, if you see Sister Noreen, please congratulate her. St. Vincent is a thriving parochial school. And also, as we wrap up May, which is Mental Health Awareness Month, I joined Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill and County Commissioner Typhoon Tullin and others at a Stop Out Stigma Walk this past Saturday sponsored by Rotary. It's great to see the support from the public and to share the importance of understanding that we need to fight the stigma related to mental health. And I now have two proclamations to present. And the first one, National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And we're going to bring Collette Prescott up, please.
Oh, there she is.
Yep, Collette, thank you for joining us today. And it is very sad that each time we present this, we still, each year, we still, so much needs to be done. And there always seems to be a headline that reminds us of the importance of doing this, such as the shooting over the weekend in South Jersey, a state that has taken gun violence seriously. And it just shows the importance of everyone working together to be aware of the gun violence around us. Whereas gun suicide claims the lives of over 23,000 people in the United States each year and more than 14,000 die in gun homicides. Whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in any other developed country. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they have served is the mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from the dangerous people. And whereas firearms are the leading cause of death of children and teens in the United States. And whereas in January 2013, Hadya Edelton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's Second Inorgo Parade, was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, would now be celebrating her 23rd birthday. And whereas, to help honor Hadya and 100 Americans whose lives are cut short and countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, the National Coalition of Organizations have designated June 4, 2021, the first Friday in June, as the Sixth Annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas, the idea was inspired by Hadya's friends who asked classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when they're out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 4, the first Friday in June. And to help awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to all we can do to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to keep our children safe. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Connolly, Mayor of Burrow, Madison, on behalf of the company body hereby proclaim June 4, 2021, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day and encourage all citizens to wear orange and support their local community's effort to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Collette, there you have your, and we did the proclamation this year in orange to make it stand out because we hope everyone else does. I'd like to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Mayor Connolly. And thank you to the town council and certainly the Madison Police Department, Health Department, everybody who helps to keep Madison safe and healthy. And I appreciate you passing this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you do.
You're welcome.
Okay, we will now bring on Dan Villarreal and Mark Simmons. All right, sharing this great, Dan, Mark, great to see you.
Good to see you.
And this is an honor to present you with this proclamation bearing June 2021 Pride Month. And what was always an honor to do this proclamation. This is especially a big honor because I guess we're approaching five years, I think, that was able to do their wedding ceremony. That's something that 10 years ago would not have been possible. And certainly, we are making great strides, but have a long ways to go. So let me read this proclamation and ask you to make some comments. And there it is already presented in hand. So whereas our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people and some of the most inspiring moments in our history have arisen from the various civil rights movements that have brought one group after another from the margins of the mainstream to from the margins to the mainstream of American society. And whereas, in the movement toward equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ people, an historic turning point occurred 52 years ago on June 28, 1969, in New York City, the onset of the Stonewall Riots. During these riots, the LGBTQ citizens rose up and fought against discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas, all human beings are being born free and equal in dignity and the rights and LGBTQ, and their allies have immeasurable impact to the cultural and civic economic success of our country. And whereas, a borough of Madison is committing to support invisibility, dignity, equality for LGBTQ people in our diverse community. And whereas, while society is at large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality, it's essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital. And whereas, celebrating Pride Month brings awareness and provides support and advocacy for Madison's LGBTQ community and its opportunity to take action and engage in a dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. And whereas, it's imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Connolly, Mayor of Burrow, Madison, on behalf of the company body hereby proclaim month of June 2021 as Pride Month in the borough of Madison and supporting the LGBTQ community and to recognize all LGBTQ residents who've influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhood to make Madison a vibrant community for which to live, work, and visit. And Mark, thank you for accepting this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of the LGBTQ Madisonians and all Madisonians. Pride is a feeling of satisfaction in oneself. Gay pride not only means being positive of oneself as an individual who identifies as a lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender, but is also an honor to belong to the greater LGBTQ community.
Gay pride is also a movement as much as it is a celebration of individuality and community. Demonstrating pride in everyday life is a way of protesting injustices, violence, and inequalities and inequities many in the LGBT community have faced. Pride also raises awareness for the issues the LGBTQ community continues to encounter, advocates for equal rights, promotes self-affirmation, and encourages society to actively prevent the discrimination and violence that still occurs.
The Madison Borough Council's proclamation affirms how welcoming the town is to the LGBTQ community as well as all diverse populations. When I read this proclamation, it reminded me of a quote from Barack Obama. "When all Americans are treated as equal, no matter who they are or whom they love, we are all more free." This is the ideal Madison strives to achieve with this proclamation. Thank you, Madison.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Borough Council.
Thank you, guys.
You, Dan, and Mark, appreciate your comments on behalf of all of Madison. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. All right, we now move on to reports from committees. Public Safety, Council President Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Police Department, on May 14th, Sergeant Ken Shannon successfully completed the FBI's Executive Leadership Institute training. This course was the third of three training courses needed to be completed to be awarded the FBI Law Enforcement and Executive Development Association Trilogy Award. All Madison police personnel completed mandatory LGBTQ and the community training, which is a part of our community law enforcement affirmative relations training mandated by the New Jersey Attorney General. On May 28th, the Madison Police Department will be hosting the second of two COVID vaccine dates in our emergency operations room. The Reverend Craig Dunn and volunteers from First Baptist Church, along with Zoofell Health, will be running the event. During the past several weeks, Madison experienced two vehicle thefts and one attempted vehicle theft, all in the same neighborhood. All incidents occurred to vehicles that were left unlocked. These incidents are not unique to Madison, and car thefts have been on the rise throughout New Jersey. We can deter these types of crimes if owners remember to lock their vehicles and remove valuables when the vehicle is not in use. Newly appointed patrolmen, Renato Kapalas and Vincent Delandro were recently assigned to this week to their respective patrol squads as they begin field training with their assigned field training officers for the next 16 weeks. And finally, Patrolman Nelson Jimenez and Michael Clancy just finished a week-long police bicycle patrol school in Monmouth County, which trains officers who are assigned to a bike patrol unit. Madison Police Department has a long history of our officers utilizing bicycles while on patrol in the downtown district. And we welcome our two newest members of the Bike Patrol Unit from the Fire Department. On May 14th, our 1921 Aaron's Fox Fire Truck Geraldine turned 100 years old. It was on this date that Mrs. Geraldine Rockefeller Dodge officially presented the Aaron's Fox Fire Truck to the Borough of Madison. On this date, a parade was held, followed by a town-wide celebration and pumping demonstration. This was the first of three fire engines that Mrs. Dodge purchased and gave to Madison over the years. On May 23rd, the Madison Fire Department celebrated 140 years of protecting Madison's citizens, business, and property from the ravages of fire. It was on May 23rd, 1881, in O'Brien's Hall, which was located on Waverly Place, the Hook and Ladder Company Number One was formally created. One of the founding members of the Ladder Company was, the Fire Department, was Fred Barton. Fred served as president of the Fire Department from 1889 to 1912. He created the Madison Eagle, which was the Madison Eye Opener first in 1877. He was also instrumental in encouraging the incorporation of Madison in 1889. There was editorials in the Madison Eagle and served as president of the Madison Board of Education as well as the first tax collector for Madison. Barton Street in Madison is named after him. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and a great step back in history. And now Finance and Borough Clerk, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Finance Department, the administration and the Finance Department are continuing to monitor the impact that the pandemic is having on municipal revenues. Tax collection rates have been good, but certain revenues like court fees, parking, and interest income continue to be low. But there is a bit of good news in that the recycling markets have improved. Years ago, the borough used to receive up to $60,000 a year in revenue from the sale of curbside recycling materials. But in the past few years, that market has been very weak. And as a result, we have had to pay to dispose.
You're muted.
Yep, Austria, it's frozen.
Mayor, let's move on from Austria.
Yeah, I was going to say, well, we will move on, so we'll come back and sort of. But in the meantime, let's go to Public Works Engineering, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. DPW has started a pilot program with the Madison Housing Authority to have their hour-in-service mechanics maintain and service their vehicle inventory. It's about four vehicles, I believe, oil changes, that kind of thing, on a reimbursement basis. The Gumbuster Machine and Sidewalk Sweeper have been serviced and will be back in action shortly, keeping the downtown commercial area clear of litter, gum, and debris for shoppers and sidewalk diners. DPW completed the full servicing of the senior citizen van, which the mayor mentioned before, and which restarted limited transportation services today. A newsletter was issued and the phone numbers are on there. The commercial cardboard compactor is fully operational, making a big dent in our recycling disposal costs. The community pool entrance drainage project is almost done. It will be completed prior to the pool reopening on Memorial Day weekend. DPW planted 90 shade trees in the Madison right-of-way throughout town. The next phase of the tree planting project will be in October when planting conditions are better. For engineering, the Denville Line striping was completed, all mills and overlay roads and crossworks last week. Sofeli and Sons started tree removal work at Anthony Drive and Wayne Boulevard and expects drainage work to start next week. Hartley Dodge Memorial Plaza Restoration, general contractor Merrill and Garaguso of Swedesboro, New Jersey, will be mobilizing on Monday, June 7. The MEC, Madison Environmental Commission, is holding a community forum on beekeeping and pollinated gardening in Madison. It will be held on June 2 at 7:30 PM. Sign-up details are available on the Green Madison NJ Facebook page. The MEC is also hosting a family-friendly Echo scavenger hunt in partnership with a team of high school students. This self-guided event asks residents to find Echo sites in the downtown area and submit answers online. Links to the online forum will be posted on RoseNet on June 1. Citizens will submit their answers by June 10. Will be eligible for three gift certificates to McCool's. Sustainable Madison, the chair presented at the Sustainable Jersey Sustainable Summit Champions Showcase, that's a mouthful, last Monday night representing Madison, which is the 2020 middle population champion with the most points in that category. Madison also has the second highest total points in the state behind Woodbridge, a much larger town. Parks Advisory Commission, for personal reasons, the chair, Tom Solaki, needs to temporarily step down as Parks Committee Chair for the remainder of the year. He has drafted a letter of resignation to the mayor. And from my personal perspective, he will be missed terribly. He's a really good talent in the division. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, my spacebar wasn't working, sorry. Thank you, and thank you for the, we will certainly miss Tom, and hopefully we can get him back and chair after he catches up on things. And now we'll go back to the Finance and Borough Clerk, Austria.
Can I put a plug in that Optimum needs to fix the internet in Madison? Because I go in and out all the time, and so do my neighbors. But anyway, going back to recyclables, it's really important to recycle because we're actually making some money off the recyclables. And we actually have to pay for our garbage and the tipping fees for every ton of garbage that is collected. So if we have more recyclables, we make money. If we have more garbage, we lose money. From the Utility Billing Department, residents and businesses are encouraged to pay their utility bills through our online bill pay portal. It's fast, it's easy, and once registered
I'm lost, ma'am.
I mean, I'm lost. You can register paperless billing, get notifications, email, or text it to you, and even have your bill automatically paid every month. It's very convenient, not only for the utility customer, but for the borough and the utility staff because they're much easier to process compared to checks and utility stubs. So please visit rosenet.org and click on the pay bills online link for more information. And then finally, I'm pleased to say that we're working on several grants, one for more trail development in Memorial Park and for the playground equipment on Dodge Field that will be handicap accessible. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now we move on to Community Affairs. Let's go on.
Thank you, Mayor. The next meeting of the Downtown Development Commission is scheduled for Thursday, June 17th at 7:15 via Zoom. Don't forget about the farmer's market. It's every Thursday from 1 to 6. And the Taste of Madison is coming in June. You'll receive a restaurant passport. There'll be a 50/50 in tricky tray raffles. More details coming soon. Madison Area Chamber of Commerce is accepting nominations for the annual Extra Mile Award for exceptional customer service. Nominations must be submitted by June 1. Fire extinguisher inspections will be held on June 8 from noon to 4 on the corner of Central Avenue and Main Street. The events open to everyone, $15 for inspections. New and refurbished fire extinguishers will be available for purchase. Spring Ahead into the Art Series continues, May 28, with Morris Plains Community Band. On June 4, as a opening night reception for the Hidden Figures Event on the 5th, the Madison Community Arts Center will host the Bethel Amy Church Sons of Thunder Male Choir, as well as two ballerinas from the New York, two young ballerinas from the New York City Ballet, and Louis Martinez, a Puerto Rican folk guitarist. These performances will be recorded and broadcast, and the funding came from a grant provided by Morris Arts. For our Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, the bus to help transport seniors has restarted with COVID guidelines in place, which will be evaluated as things open up more. In conjunction with this Friday's Madison High School Day of Service, a performance is happening on Friday at the Community Arts Center, and senior citizens will have the option to be bused there. And students are also doing yard work around town for seniors. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and Utilities, Ms. Durlak.
Thank you, Mayor. The Electric Department replaced the donated Christmas tree from St. Vincent Parish with a beautiful eight-foot blue spruce that was purchased from Cove Yellows. The department has set a new pole at 322 Main Street for underground electric service for two new condominiums there. The department also replaced an old utility pole in front of 18 Madison Ave and transferred the town lines and equipment to the new pole. Subcontractor American Electrical Testing is replacing the relays in our James Park substation with the assistance and supervision of the Electric Department. And the department has started utility service work for the four community place redevelopment and is also reviewing plans for future work on Lincoln Place and Cook Avenue parking lot renovation. The Water Department excavated and replaced an older model fire hydrant on Ashland Road. The department also installed a drain at the new dog park to try and dry the area around the fountain. And finally, the Water Department reminds us to please refrain from watering our lawns during sunlight hours when 50% of the water used is lost due to evaporation. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and Health, Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mayor. There have been updates to the COVID-19 guidelines that we just mentioned. There have been updates to the COVID-nineteen guidelines that were just mentioned by the governor. However, these are subject to change, but I'll go through them right now. And they include the removal of outdoor gathering capacity and capacity limits, removal of outdoor mask mandates, suspension of New Jersey travel-related quarantine rules. But however, residents should continue to follow CVC guidelines for travel, including delaying travel until the traveler is fully vaccinated. Effective this Friday, May twenty-eighth, most indoor mask mandates will be lifted as well as the requirement to social distance, indoor and outdoor gatherings. Businesses, however, are permitted to individually continue requirements for masking and social distancing. And finally, masks will still be required in schools, daycares, youth camps, healthcare and long-term cares settings on public transit and in certain other situations. But this again will be subject to update. As of our last report, Madison reports eight hundred and sixty-eight confirmed cases with no new confirmed cases between May thirteenth and May twentieth, so that's good news. And as a reminder, all New Jersey residents twelve years and older are eligible to receive the COVID-nineteen vaccine. Currently only the Pfizer vaccine is approved for those ages twelve to fifteen. Vaccines are readily available on a same-day appointment or walk-in basis at many locations. Check with your provider for their specific policy and visit rosenet.org for the continuing updates on the vaccine program. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and now we move on to Communications and Petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and Council received several emails from May fourteenth to the seventeenth. There were nineteen emails received regarding demolition in the movie theater. Eleven of those were Madison residents.
Thank you very much. Now we move on to the first of two opportunities for the public to comment. For those that are having attended a meeting or the first time, this one is limited to items that are on our agenda discussion and also the resolutions that are part of the consent agenda. And it's also helpful so you know what is on the consent agenda, so I will go through these resolutions. If you want to comment on any topic that is not listed right now, that will come up later in the meeting and you'll be able to comment at that point. And if you do comment, we ask you to click by raising your hand. You don't need to wait until the previous person has finished speaking so we know that you are in the queue because once I close the commentary, we cannot reopen it. We ask that you try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we'll give you a one-minute grace period and have you stop at four minutes. The two agenda items on discussion is the Madison Hidden Figures Presentation, an update that is coming up, and also a marijuana legislation update. No formal action will be taken tonight, but this is informative for the public and the council. As you'll be hearing, that action has to be taken by August if there is putting ordinances in place or to opt out. So this is just setting the stage so we can make proper decisions. And these are the resolutions you may comment on. Resolution R forty-five, one forty-five is authorized purchase of benches for downtown. This was funded in ordinance sixteen bash twenty twenty-one. Orderment one forty-six, authorizing contract with Clark Hatton and Hints for professional services regarding Hartley Dodge Memorial Plaza. The construction on the restoration of the plaza will begin in early June. This is being funded through ordinances fifty-six, twenty sixteen, and ordinance fourteen, twenty eighteen. So you can tell how long this project has been in the hopper. That's five years for the initial funding ordinance, so we're looking forward to move forward. And this is not to exceed thirty-seven thousand five hundred. Resolution one forty-seven, appointing Sharon Breno to position a part-time office assistant in the Tax Assessor and Construction Department Office. And this is filling a part-time vacancy at the hourly rate of nineteen dollars and maximum twenty-nine hours a week. Resolution one forty-eight is authorized Eagle Scout Project Summer Hill Park. Resolution one forty-nine is authorized in agreement with Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council. It's one of the purchasing co-ops. This was for a five-year period, October twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six. Resolution one fifty is ratifying the approval of the Madison-Chattanooga item, which was the audit. This normally would have been done at joint meeting, but was not received by Madison in time. Resolution one fifty-one is establishing petty cash funds for U.S. custodians. This is authorizing John Misha and Sarah Murphy for petty cash. Resolution one fifty-two is accepting an amended spending plan for Affordable Trust Housing Trust Fund. So this is a plan that outlines how we'll spend the money. This is one of the many requirements we have in our affordable housing settlement. Resolution one fifty-three is authorized in cancellation of five hundred ninety-five dollars, sixty-eight cents and late fees for real estate property tax. Resolution one fifty-four is approving the person-to-person place-to-place transfer of a plenary consumption liquor license. This is moving from Salgino Pub to Madison Market LLC. Resolution one fifty-five is authorizing twenty twenty-one grant application by the Madison Republic Library. And this is for the part of the library construction. And this is the estimated project cost is one point eight million. Grant application is for fifty percent of that. Resolution one fifty-six is supporting environmental conservation potential. Support, let me try to get, Borough of Madison, supporting the environmental conservation potential of the Drew Forest. And that is a follow-up for action that was taken by the Open Space Committee. Resolution one fifty-seven is authorizing appointment of a lieutenant in the Fire Department. And this is for, and the appointment of Rob Dunne and Andrew Atrexey, I'm sorry, it was one fifty, one fifty-seven, one fifty-seven is appointing Andrew Atkinson as lieutenant and resolution one fifty-eight is appointing Rob Dunne as lieutenant in the Fire Department. So you may comment on any of those resolutions or the two agenda items. And if you want to comment on something else, please wait until later in the meeting. Please raise your hand now. And let me just scroll up. All right, we have a call-up. Chris Hepburn, as you're called up and unmuted, please state your name, your address and the resolution or the agenda item you were commenting on. Failure to do that in a timely manner may result in you being muted or disconnected. Christine.
Okay, hey, hi. My name is Christine Hepburn. My address is one Lightning Bug Hollow Road, Blairstown, New Jersey. I'd actually hope to get in line behind some other people, but go ahead. Obviously, I don't live in Madison currently, but I did for quite a while. And I know several of you and people, I'm sure, that are in the meeting, listening to the meeting. I was on the zoning board, the planning board and the Open Space Advisory Committee, as well as helping to lead Madison Matters way back. I'm actually nervous now, which is amazing, given that I must have commented at a hundred or two hundred Madison meetings. So I'm here to urge you to vote yes, of course, on resolution one fifty-six having to do with preservation of the Drew Forest. And I'm, and I, though I have voted for several of you, very happily, way back, you're still there. Congrat, good for you. I cannot vote for any of you now, so I really appreciate you giving me this opportunity to speak. And I want to applaud Madison residents who have gotten together to help preserve the Drew Forest, while at the same time helping Drew University, you know, be successful into the future. I applaud the council. Your, the town is so amazing. I mean, your proclamations were amazing tonight. But anyway, I applaud you for having this resolution on this agenda already. I, you all know, and it's in your resolution, all of the ways that the Drew Forest, all forty-five acres are extremely important. I will not go into that, although I'd love to. I would especially love to talk about the American toads that breed there in amazing numbers, but I won't. I know I just snuck it in, but what I want to do tonight, since I am from out of town, is to assure you that as important as the forest is to Madison, as wonderfully in addition to a park system, it would make, and in addition to, of course, keeping it for Drew University too. It's also really appreciated far and wide. For, I won't go into it why, but I have been on several tours of the Drew Forest led by Sarah Webb that included people from, representing environmental groups, almost from the whole state of New Jersey, maybe not the very southern part. Also, more recently, I'm a trustee of the Ridge and Valley Land Conservancy headquartered in Blairstown. This is an hour away from Madison, but several trustees and staff have toured the Drew Forest. Without exception, every person who has toured the Drew Forest comes away educated, you know, inspired, super impressed. There is such a huge interest in the really broad state. Okay. You know, native plants are so important. You all know that. It's a shining example of what you can do with deer control and admittedly, a lot of work. It's fairly unique. You have to go very far to find a deer fence that includes not only rehabilitated forest trees, but all the wildflowers, native wildflowers. And so I just want to say, go for it, pass the resolution, go for a preservation purchase that helps Drew and Madison and the far greater region. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, and great to hear from you and great to have your passion still back in the town you worked so hard for. And now we bring up Eric Range.
Thank you, Mayor. Eric Range, fellow Avenue Madison. I just like to, I would also like to voice my support for resolution one fifty-six being put forward tonight to work to preserve the woods and arboretum on the campus of Drew University. This early proactive measure will hopefully ensure the borough continues to reap all the benefits from the many wooded acres that are part of the campus and avoid potential overdevelopment in this area. I also hope that by working together with our long-term partners at Drew, we can find solutions that address the needs of both the borough and Drew, while ensuring we are preserving not only this important ecological resource, but also assist in preserving the educational and cultural resource, which is Drew University. So I hope that the council will support this resolution and pass it tonight. Thank you.
Hey, Eric, and now we bring up Kathy Kakavale.
Kathleen Kakavale, eighty-two Central Avenue, Madison. I'm speaking on behalf of my position as Chair of the Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee tonight. I want to comment on three of the resolutions very quickly. So Resolution one forty-five about the benches from Keystone Ridge Designs. I know that the company has some green products, some products made from recycled content, and I'm just wondering if what the town is buying falls into that category. Number two, the resolution one forty-nine about the Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council. I'd like to know, since this is a five-year contract, whether they offer any opportunities for green purchasing, purchasing of green products, such as paper, cleaning products, et cetera. And finally, of course, number one fifty-six, the Drew Forest Resolution. I polled the regular members of the Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee and we were unanimous endorsing the Open Space Committee's resolution that was presented to the council. If the council resolutions reflects that, Open Space Committee resolution, we, of course, support that and we support it whether it does or not, as long as it endorses the preservation of the Drew Forest Preserve, which we see as a win-win for the town and the university if the initiative can be accomplished in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I think there are a couple of quick questions to answer. The benches, they are, we have a couple of all-metal benches already in town, so they are reflect those. So they are not made out of recycled plastic, but they have a very long life, so. Well, so it may not be recycling, but it's probably the next best thing, which is using something that lasts virtually forever. The Morris Co-op, as we are encouraging all department heads to review all purchases from various co-ops for green and sustainable priorities. So while they may not be a full green one, they certainly have products. And the resolution that you may, people may not have read was based on exactly what was passed by the Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Committee. And now we bring up Lydia Chambers.
Thank you very much, Bob. I'm Lydia Chambers and I live in Harding Township at eighty-seven Milbrook Road. But I'm speaking to you tonight as a member of the Garden Club of Madison. I'm currently serving as co-chair of the Conservation Committee. And the Garden Club of Madison has a long history of support of the Drew Forest Preserve. Over the years, the club has donated money to buy native plants for the forest restoration and a bench for folks to sit and enjoy time in the forest. Our club has also successfully proposed the Restoration Project for a Significant Garden Club of America New Jersey Committee Grant. So this past week, the Garden Club of Madison met and voted unanimously to endorse the Drew Forest Resolution that you have before you tonight, Resolution one fifty-six. We support it because it sets the course toward preservation of this important biodiversity hotspot, which is important to the region, and we hope you will all support it too. I also wanted to let you know that there is a group forming called the Friends of the Drew Forest and it's a volunteer organization dedicated to supporting efforts to permanently preserve the forty-five acre forest at Drew as open space in a way that will strengthen the university's financial foundation for years to come. We have a Facebook page that folks are invited to join and I appreciate you taking a moment to listen to me. Thank you very much for your consideration and support of this resolution.
Thank you, Lydia, for joining our meeting tonight and all your work. And now we'll bring up Chris Coltis.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chris Coltis. I live in Long Hill Township on Long Hill Road. And I am, as it's kind of weird to say now, but as of recently a Drew alum. And I wanted to talk about Resolution one fifty-six. Not only am I a Drew alum, but for the past three years of my undergraduate at Drew, I was the student director of the Forest Restoration Project. It was during this time where I discovered the significance of the Drew Forest Preserve, which is what I would like to share with you all today. As a student director, I could talk to you about the importance of biodiversity or the importance of invasive removal, but I wanted to talk about my experience specifically as a student. The Drew Forest Preserve is essential to the identity of Drew students. I know many alum and current students that can attest to this. The Forest Preserve is also a place where many of us have found solace and comfort. I know that in the last year, the Forest Preserve has been a sanctuary for Madison residents to recover from the exhausting day-to-day life during the pandemic. I also wanted to highlight that the Forest Preserve provides incredible experiential knowledge in the field of biology and environmental sciences. Because of the opportunities the Forest Preserve has provided me as a Drew student, I'm going to be pursuing a career in conservation biology with a focus in ecological restoration. I urge all of you to vote to protect the true forest and I hope that these opportunities will remain available to future generations of Drew students so that they may be inspired by the legacy the Forest Preserve has, like I have been. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for your work as a student there. And Jean Cracovia. Jean, need to unmute yourself there?
Yes, the little all-mute button. Sorry. My name is Jean Cracovia and I reside at seventy-nine Barnesdale Road in Madison. I am the Chair of the Shade Tree Management Board. And at our May board meeting, we discussed. and at our May board meeting, we discussed this proposed Resolution 156 and passed a very similar resolution. I and the Shade Tree Board support Resolution 156, which describes the environmental value of the Drew Forest to both Drew University and to Madison. We need to continue to partner with Drew so that the university can grow while preserving that which is very unique to Drew, and that is the Drew Forest. So I thank you for your time and hope you support the resolution.
Thank you, Jean. Now bring up Claire Woodcomb.
12 Fairwood Road. I, I'm so interested in so many comments that have come before. My kids grew up playing with Chris Hepburn's kid, and I didn't know anything about the Drew Forest at the time. And I also didn't know that Drew was, had such a strong program in biology and botany based on the forest. I'm the Chair of the Environmental Commission. We have not yet had a chance to meet to, to make any kind of formal vote on, on the, our feelings about the Drew Forest, but I, a couple of facts that are sort of interesting is that the 45 acres are the only contiguous woodlands in Madison, and they're our most important aquifer recharge area. And the carbon sequestration of the canopy trees is critical, and also the Drew Forest really helps to mitigate the heat island effect for, for a large part of Madison. And I went to, we had a small group environmental commission meeting in the forest a week ago. We saw herons. It was really fabulous. So I urge the council to support this resolution, and I'm very proud of the town and its, its commitment to both the health of Drew University and the health of our environment.
Thank you very much, Claire. And now we'll bring up Sarah Webb.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you so much for having this gathering, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak. I'm Sarah Webb, a professor of environmental science and biology at Drew University for a long time, 35 years. I've lived in Madison most of that time. I've recently retired. But I'm still volunteering to direct the Drew Forest Preserve and its restoration project. And I do hope, like others, that the forest can be protected with open space or park status. The forest is, I give you some context. The forest at Drew is one of the only forests in our county and one of the few in northern New Jersey that has underneath the canopy of trees, an understory of native plants, where beech and sassafras trees sprout, where pollinators and other insects can survive, along with the birds that depend on them. We have over 100 species of birds that have been spotted there. It's an intact ecosystem, which is very unusual. Most of our forests in northern New Jersey are suffering from what's been called empty forest syndrome and invaded forest syndrome, thanks to the deer and invasive species. So when I first came to Drew, there were native shrubs, there were wildflowers. It was a good habitat for teaching and research, but there have been steep losses over the years as ornamental vines escaped and pulled down some four acres of forest, literally, and other invasive species, and of course, our dear friends, the deer, have destroyed the forest understory. There's nothing beneath the treetops in most of our forests, except for invasive plants, which are very sterile to wildlife. So this restoration project has really turned that around. And it is, it was very exciting, and I have to acknowledge so many people that have contributed to its success. The community's been deeply involved, and Lydia spoke of the garden clubs' contributions, which have been incredibly generous and helpful to moving it forward. And also, Chris Hepburn's foundation has made it possible as well. There are just too many people to thank, but it's really been a partnership of the community and other organizations and agencies and individuals. So this restoration had three parts to it, still does, present tense. Some planting, the missing vegetation, but first, controlling the deer with a deer fence that was put up in 2011, and controlling invasive plants, which is, as you know, difficult, and that's still a work in progress. And the planting of native plants is something many of you may have participated in. 2,000 or more seedlings of native trees were put in, hundreds of native shrubs, hundreds of different native wildflowers of 87 different species. Much of this funded by the Garden Club of Madison, and much of it planted. Some of it contributed by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. So this all took a village over the last 12 years, and it's all become possible because of enormous and generous investment of time and funds by the Garden Club, the university, the community, and of course, hundreds of students and volunteers. So I have to acknowledge all of them. And what the result is, we have this great success. And there's still lots of invasive species to control, but we have this very rich native forest. Okay, right. So I'll just emphasize two things. One is that the value of this forest goes well beyond the local moment of being in it. It's very helpful to our water, our air, our carbon resilience, the quality of life in Madison. And I also want to say and invite everyone to visit the Drew Forest. And if you Google Zuck Arboretum, you'll get directions for where to park, and go take a look and enjoy the ponds there, and appreciate that we have a plethora of native wildflowers that really aren't growing anywhere else in our region. So I fervently hope we find a path to protect this island of biodiversity. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Sarah, and appreciate all the, all the education you have been doing for many of the people who are speaking tonight and many of the residents of Madison. And now we bring up Judy Crowell.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Judy Crowell, 27 Laurel Way in Madison. I'm going to keep this extremely brief. I just wanted to voice support for the Resolution 156 for all the reasons that have been mentioned by the, by previous commentators, but also for what's in the resolution itself. And I think that this presents a really unique opportunity for a win-win with university. The university has some financial needs, and I think the potential to take a direction that can be cooperative and collaborative with, with the university and have it be a win-win for the community, the school, and future generations. So I also just wanted to echo something that Chris Coltis said about the solace that, that this, particularly the Zuck Arboretum has provided during the pandemic. And I certainly experienced that myself. I found that the trails that I normally walk were very crowded at the beginning of the pandemic, and I remembered the Drew Woods and walked over there, and suddenly, it was like being in a different world. I had the place almost to myself. It was really quite lovely. So I just wanted to echo that. That's been my experience as a community member who has taken advantage of that beautiful, wonderful ecological gem. Thank you.
Judy, thank you very much for your comments. And before I forget, I usually like to announce how many attendees are in our audience. We started, we now have 37 attendees. So you know how many are in the virtual room with you, and that's not counting our panelists. And now we bring up Bridget Daly. Need to unmute yourself, Bridget?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Bridget Daly, 28 Keep Street, Madison. I'd like to comment on two things. First, regarding Resolution 156. I also heartily support efforts to preserve and protect the Drew Forest and Drew University for future generations. Having been to the Zuck Arboretum and walked around the Drew Forest, it is an incredibly valuable asset to our town, to Drew and to Drew students. As Sarah Webb pointed out, it's an ecological oasis that is open to us all. It serves tremendous environmental benefit to our town, and so many people have worked so hard to restore it to its native stat, state over the last 10-plus years. Also, it is really a vital living laboratory for Drew students, which is a huge part of Drew's identity as the forest, which is its nickname, and it supports so many ecological programs there. Secondly, I have a question about ordinance 24 regarding the purchase of trucks and accessories for the Department of Public Works, which is, what is the energy efficiency of the vehicles? And can that be part of the public record so that residents know what we are purchasing?
Right, I will see if our staff can comment on that. Bridget, anything else? Mayor, Jim, do you have any details on that? I know we were, we will start working on having that Morris Park.
Sorry, Mayor, we couldn't, we couldn't quite hear you. I think the, the video, your video is going in and out.
I will, since Austria commented, her provider, I will give a negative shout-out for Xfinity, who was supporting, I am not in Madison right now, and it is, things have been freezing. But any, do we have any information we can share on the energy efficiency of these vehicles?
Mayor, maybe I can jump in. There's a, the largest purchase is for $260,000, and that's for a hook lift truck that does not have the technology in terms of electric or battery-powered sufficient for our purposes. The other two vehicles are going to be F-150 trucks, and we are exploring a hybrid for both of those vehicles.
Thank you. What we need. And now we'll bring up Kate Partley. And you need to unmute yourself now, Kate. Kate, you are muted. All right, well, Kate, if you can hear me, if you want to raise your hand, we, we're going to take you down. But if you want to raise your hand again, we can pitch at the end, and we will now bring up Tom Alenputis.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Okay, Tom Harland Putus, 27 Palmeroy Road.
Previous member, past member of the Madison Environmental Commission, also a Chair of the Environmental Commission. Welcome to everybody who's here. I heard some familiar voices, which is fantastic to hear Chris Hepburn. I, I probably sat through a few dozen meetings with you, Chris, and always appreciated all the input and insight you gave to the borough. And you had Dr. Webb, Professor Webb, who I participated with. We put together the Environmental Resources Index that we revised a couple of times during my tenure, tenure. Thanks, Professor Webb. You've always been so helpful in guiding us environmentally in the borough and with Drew University. And Judy Crowell, who just gave away a nice, well-kept secret about where to go when the trails get crowded. Now that place might not be as peaceful anymore, but it's a beautiful place to visit in the Zuck Arboretum. So I support this Drew Forest Resolution also. I know how important that area is to our ecosystem. I know how important it is also to Drew University. I, I did not sit in on the first meeting when, I assume, the council brought it up for discussion. So if you don't mind, Mayor, I just have a couple of questions, and maybe you can answer them when my time is up. I, I wanted to know what discussions had begun with Drew, or I've been going along with Drew regarding their forest, because like Professor Webb said, and that other gentleman, that student who spoke, he, he spoke so well about all the benefits of that Drew Forest to him and to his peers going through school there. So I'm sure that Drew appreciates it, and Drew is a partner of Madison as an active university right now. So I'm curious to know what we're doing. And then what steps have been initiated already by Madison Open Space or the borough to possibly obtain some funds from Morris County Green Acres? Or is there any other grants from the NJDEP? I know Ray is a master at getting grant money to help us preserve open space, Ray and Jim, and, and a lot of other volunteers in the borough. So I'd like to hear about that if you have a minute to discuss that, Mayor. So, you know, but I do support the resolution. I see that there's a lot of detail put into it. It says in, in the resolution itself that it was approved on May 20th, which was last Thursday. I assume it was on their agenda of the Open Space Committee, and, and maybe it was heard multiple times, because there's some notes in here that it was, I think there was some discussion started around April 11th. And, and lastly, Mayor, if you're taking notes there, what, does anybody know what Drew's intentions actually are about possibly selling some property to raise some funds to, to help themselves offset some losses, expenses, or maybe expansions of the university? It would be good for the community to get an understanding of what's going on with that value, valuable university that's part of our borough. I, I also, on another.
One minute, Tom.
One more minute. That's a lot of time here. Really wasn't enough time when I was speaking the other day at the forum, though I have to tell you, especially because I speak so slowly. The, the, the question that was brought up about the, the new DPW equipment and, and the fire truck. It would be great if the other equipment besides the fire truck were more efficient as far as having some electric power or hydrogen power or something else. So if those aren't already, haven't been purchased, hopefully you guys will make a presentation to us in the near future, what, what kind of equipment you're buying, because I know that has to be a big focus for the borough moving forward, to be more sustainable with using energy and protecting the environment. And, and we can, we can make that happen. We have the resources for it in the borough. So thanks, everybody, for, for taking the time to listen to me. And really, again, it's nice to hear all those familiar voices that came back to talk about this important resolution.
Thank you, Tom. I'm going to try to cover some of your questions there, and hopefully I won't freeze up. There's been constant communications with Drew University. I cannot go into detail with most of these, but they certainly, we, we know that Drew is no different than any other small liberal arts college across this country, that it is challenging times, and they are looking to make sure they are a vibrant university for years to come and generations of students. And so we are together with them in, in that quest, and we're also together in the quest, as our, this resolution says, to committing the balance, and this is, you know, preservation of land does not mean it cannot be turned into a, a cash resource. And that's exactly what we are working on, which is why we have connected with the New Jersey Land Conservancy, and they will be having conversations with Drew University as they go on, as things go on. You mentioned Green Acres. There will also be the county open space, and that's the importance of our own local open space Recreation and Historic Preservation Fund, because matching dollars are so important. And so, you know, as we look at use of these dollars that when land transfers, the opportunity can be lost forever, and so it's certainly going to be a priority. We, we know that Drew has sold off a lot of the properties that were separate lots and in different zones, and now the conversations are on the, the lot that is in the university zone. And so this is why these conversations are so important and will be ongoing. And as I said, and as this resolution is very clear, the commitment that the borough is ready to put forward in these conversations. And now we'll bring up Bridget.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much, Council and Council members and, and Mayor Bob. I am speaking on behalf of Friends of the Madison Shade Tree, and it has been our remit for decades now to try to preserve the canopy for Madison because we have always known its value. More recently, we've become part of the widening recognition of how each large tree is part of an ecosystem that sustains all kinds of life, and, and the importance of native plantings is, it's knowledge I wish we'd had 20 or 30 years ago. But in the, in the pursuit of planting new trees, I'm reminded every time we plant one that it won't be a mature tree for 20 years. In the Drew Forest are not only mature trees, but some of the old In the Drew Forest are not only mature trees, but some of the oldest trees in Madison. And when the mayor says it's irreplaceable, it's irreplaceable. Uh, because we are now able better to track the, the number of trees that come down on private property. With the tree ordinance, I'm aware that when we remove trees, even damaged trees or dying trees. We're removing mature trees and the ratio of places we have to replant is much smaller than it needs to be. Every large tree does the work of a hundred and eighty-nine of trees the size we plant when we plant along the roads. So, so it isn't even a question of preserving it. To some extent, it's a, it's a treasure that I think the whole world would recognize the contribution to. Forest preservation is a, is a, a major part of any hope we have of reclaiming climate change or its control. So I hope that, yes, please, support Resolution one fifty-six. Um, and I'm, and I'm speaking as someone who is also a Drew graduate and I love Drew. Nothing that we're proposing. I hope will ever be seen as anything other than a wish to preserve Drew's. Uh, integrity as a, a university in the woods that recognized the value of native plants. And forest restoration long ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And now we bring up Kate Ransom-Silhman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, uh, I'm Kate Ransom-Silhman and I live at Sixth Highland Avenue in Madison. And um, I am a concerned citizen, also a member of the Garden Club of Madison. Um, I just wanted to uh, reiterate what so many have said about Resolution one fifty-six. The, the protected and restored areas um, that are under uh, consideration for being sold are. Dangerously rare in New Jersey and unique in Madison. Um, and I believe that looking at the conservation of the Geralda Park. Um, it presents a good roadmap for how the forest could be preserved while still generating funds that could support Drew University. I, I also want to mention, I, I don't want to repeat what others have said, but I, I want to mention that this Drew Forest. It really is unique because um, of the, the native plantings that are there are so important to wildlife. And our own tree canopy in Madison um, has, is very heavily not natives and um, I, I think. Um, Chris Shore mentioned that, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, we were planting um, Norway maples and um. The Chinese elms that are along King's Road in front of the courthouse um. Because no bugs eat them and they aren't bothered by our wildlife and so um, that's why we thought they were great. Street trees, but we now know that means that no bugs eat them and they don't support any of our wildlife. Um, and whereas the Drew Forest is um, you know, very mostly natives now, thanks to the good work of. Professor Webb. Um, and so it really is a, a very unique um, tree canopy that we can't. Replicate anywhere else and that losing it is, is, would be losing a great loss to the town. So um, I would just like to close by saying I, I support a collaborative approach with Drew and. I believe that working together, we can um, develop a win-win solution for the university, the town and for the environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. And now we bring up Chris Holland.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Chris Holland, eleven Locust Street, Madison. Um, first off, I'd just like to thank the Borough and the, the Public Works Department for um. The drainage project at the pool. I was down there today. It looks great. So hopefully we'll get rid of the, the standing water down at the um, the parking lots. Um, my second question is um, on Resolution one fifty-six. Um, I went to um, to open up the resolution. It's not up on RoseNet yet. So if you could just elaborate a little bit more on the scope of the project, the funding sources and the cost, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank, and, and the, the resolution does not outline costs, uh, funding sources. It just um. It reaffirms the commitment for the Borough to work collaboratively with Drew University with uh, fun, other funding sources and um. Uh, foundations and donors to uh, save the various sensitive uh, Drew, Drew Woods. And so that's um, that's all more to, more to come, but it, um, any project like this is a partnership from all levels. And at this point, there are no more hands raised, so I close this part of the meeting. And we move on for ordinances for hearing. Please read the statement.
Mayor, we still have agenda discussions.
I, I knew I was missing something, but it's, you know, you, you have the wrong thing on your screen at one time and you uh, jumped ahead. So I apologize for not skipping past our agenda discussions, but they're uh, coming up right now. Um, so. Uh, Hidden Figures Presentation, Ed.
Um, so I'm just gonna introduce it. Kenesha Tucker will be actually adjusting it and going through the PowerPoint, but just as a reminder. This is a project that came out of the community conversations that started last summer. Um, and will culminate with what is turning into a weekend of events on the weekend of June fourth, fifth and sixth. So, Michael, if you haven't already, if you can promote Kenesha and Danielle, um, they're gonna take it over from here.
They're both there, Deb.
Go ahead, Ken.
Oh, okay. Good, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. Um, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for carving out some time just to. Have us share with you our project update.
You should not, 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 it should be your sideways right now, so.
Oh, am I?
There we go, much better.
Sorry, is that better? Okay. Okay, great. Um, so Deb, am I advancing this or are you? I'm sorry. Oh, I can't hear you, but it seems like it's going, so.
Okay, I'm gonna advance it and try not to do it at high speed.
Wanted to start out by saying thank you. Um, as Deb said that uh, there, this, this project was um. One of the sparks that was lit um, through the Community Conversations Group and I wanted to start out um, by thanking um. Deb Cohen and Mayor Connolly for hosting the Community Conversations Event and I hear that it is back. So I'm grateful that it will be a continued um, space where the community can come out and um, continue to discuss some important topics. I wanted to thank um, all of the community members, um, the committee members, excuse me, that helped along with the project. Sharila Kum Bonfield, who is the artist that we collaborated with, again, Deb Cohen. Um, she's the woman who wears many hats, I'm sure you know. So thank you for her help. Um, it really was uh, one that um. Really um, continue, sorry, I'm using my phone. It just gave me a warning. Um, and that's why I was sideways. Um, maybe I'll just hold it. Um, so she, you know, she was the one that really promoted the project in its earlier stage and was able to. Um, really get everyone interested in it and had us in the right spaces. So thank you, Deb, for that. Deb Starker, who I met. At the Community Conversations um, meeting also was willing and ready to back. Um, program so much, so um, she's allowing um, part of the day's events to uh, at the educational annex. Um, for the, at uh, on behalf of, or excuse me, throughout the museum. Um, she also lent us uh, the services of her staff, their wisdom as far as promo goes um. And how I can approach um, different entities to make sure that the project is rep- represented well, so I thank her for that. Um, Chris Pfeiffer of Pfeiffer Designs, she did an amazing job for us, another community member that just knew about what we were doing. I believe Deb again introduced me to her and she was able to come up with an amazing logo and also banners that will be displayed on Waverly. And that leads me to um, Ms. Lisa Ellis and the DDC, thanking them and also Melanie. Because they were integral in um, just allowing us to be able to um, have these banners. And also to have them ready to be set up. Um, and they will be going up um, and will be there throughout the month of June from. June first until the twenty-first. So thank you, Lisa, and thank you, Melanie. Um, we also will have um. Some uh, storefronts that will display student work. Um, Kramer's Carpets, Madison, the Madison Hat Shop, Prima. Kennedy's All-American Barber Shop and Harvest Bistro have um, allow, allowed us to take up some of their window space to present. Some of the artistry that the um, Madison Public School students have done on behalf of the project. Um, I want to thank um, Erica Hafen and um, the Madison Community Arts Center, another venue. Um, actually, the venue that will be turned into a gallery space for all of the um, work that the students have done with their teachers. Um, again, the museum space. Um, thank you, Deb Starker, again, for your support. Um. The Friends of Florum is a, a, and Lisa McNair is allowing our project to really just celebrate the families um, that we've. Um, learned a lot about and the students have learned about and we've just thought it would be um, best for um, them to be celebrated in that way. And I did want to um, acknowledge um. Um, Danielle Nebris, who was integral not only in research and finding out a lot of um, about these families and images. Um, historical images, but she was also the connection that had us speaking to the Friends of Florum so that we can really have these families have a grand time. Um, you know, when they come into town to also see the student work. Thank Erica Yosting, who is a community member. Um, who has us two students in the district. Um, and she's also a web developer and she um, allowed her to, or awarded our. Project her talent, so we have a website that is now up and running. Um, I want to thank um, Maka. Um, and Jerry and also Deb Starker, again, another woman that wears many hats um. That uh, they were able to give um, the project a grant through the organization that was really um, again, very helpful. To make sure that we can award the teachers who are already working so hard this year to um. Feel like this was a project that they could um, implement because we were able to give them the resources that they need. And um, we wanted to also thank um, Superintendent Mark Schwartz and Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. Um, and Personnel Daniel Ross for um, just allowing us to integrate and um, implement this um, project into. The Madison Public Schools. And so um, I wanted to thank um, the teachers. And all of the administration that actually work in the school buildings. Um, Debbie, you can advance it now. Um, so this is a picture of one of the classrooms where they were engaging with the project. So I just wanted to really thank them for their willingness to do this. Again, this was a very tough year for all teachers as far as the way it began and managing the pandemic. So we knew um, approaching any school during the time that we did, which was um. Really right after winter break and asking them to do, you know, what could be described as one more thing. We, we were quite nervous about it. Um, but we do um, have a lot of um, participation. We have um, uh, first grade uh, class. Actually, excuse me, um, fifth grade class um, from King's Road School. We have fourth grade um, from, excuse me, Torrey J. And then fourth grade from King's Road School and we have kindergarten all the way up to fifth grade at Central Avenue. Um, art um, and liter- and language art teachers have become involved at MJS. And then at the high school in the same way as well, the same um, discipline as far as language arts and art. And so um, I just wanted to spend um, a few minutes just sharing some of the work and Deb, you can feel free to kind of move through this part. A little faster. So here are some of the uh, previews of some of the works that the students have done. Um, they did a character study um, for the younger students and so these are some words that they use to describe some known and some unknown. I know some of you. Um, know Bill Primus and Don Newcombe, but uh, some of you may know Rebecca Lassiter. Um, and uh, she was a evangelist that um, devoted her, her heart to the community um, at Bethel AME. But she is also a known uh, piano teacher to many of the elders that are now in town. Um, and again, uh, these were some high school students. Uh, Frances Sellers, she is um, a Drew alumni. And there's actually a scholarship that's named after her. So Drew has been a huge part of this community as we've been sharing um, previously. But um, it was great to, to be able to celebrate uh, Frances Sellers, uh, Newcombe. Um, you can ca- continue, Deb. Um, and so these are some of the posters that the students at King's Road School designed. Um, and again, we see some familiar faces and some um, new faces, some contemporary faces. Um, Charlotte Nebris, who. Um, was a trailblazer in her own right, even though she is quite young, um, as she was the first um, black lead in the American. Uh, New York City Ballet. Um, the next slide is actually showing one of the pro, uh, the, the projects that I was most excited about. Um, and I hope that we will continue to visit and talk more about this, but we ask the students to learn about these um. Under, underrepresented people uh, in our community. Um, either, you know, by learning their stories or learning about the causes that they had. And we asked um, you know, for them to select someone that they would want to memorialize and explain why. And so um, I'm sure many of you know about Isaac Gordon, whose grave is housed in the um. Uh, the, the name of the cemetery is slipping my mind, but right there on Main Street um, where he is one of the civil rights. Uh, that's, excuse me, Civil War heroes um, that is buried there. And so um, this student thought that it would be good to um. Um, memorialize um, others who are unknown and unnamed um, with another gravestone that it says exactly that. Um, so we might be hearing, you might be hearing from us in the future about that. Um, and so we were so enamored by this, um, one of the students decided to do a life um, size, or excuse me, a mini replica. Of uh, Bethel AME Church, one of the two um, black uh, and African-American churches in town. And so these are some samples of the banners and I wanted to just um, give a shout out to all of the descendants. I don't think we would have been able to gather as much information or images as we would have if they weren't willing to share their story and we're so grateful. That they have trusted us with their legacy and the stories of all of the elders in their family. And again, some of these people you might know. Some of you may not, that, that you may not know, but Bill Higgins was our first um, black uh, police officer. On the Madison uh, Police Department. Um, Judge Robinson would go on to really shape some of the laws in Washington DC. That are on record now and uh, I'm sure many of you know some, the Sally's family in some way. If, even if it's six degrees of separation. So these banners, as I said, will be um, up and down Waverly starting on June first. Um, and will go down on June twenty-first. And so um, we will be hosting a, an opening reception. The details are there. I won't go through them, but I wanted to extend um, a personal invitation to all of the um, Borough Council members. You are welcome to the opening reception ceremonies um, at, at your availability. Um, it will be hosted at the Flora Mansion. And it will be a catered event, so if you do intend on coming, if you could just use our um, project email, just to let me know that you will be there. Um, and we also will be having a first look at all of the artist um, work at the gallery space. That will be at the um, Madison Community Arts Center, so you're welcome to that as well. That is also a catered event, so if you do plan on being there, just let us know. Um, via email. Um, and I left, I left the email there. And then the next day on June fifth, uh, will be open to the public. Where they can come to the gallery space and visit all of the other places in town, um, just to see the student work. Um, and um, the First Baptist Church on Cook Avenue, they will be um, hosting their fish fry. We missed it last year because of the pandemic, but they're bringing it back um, and have joined with our events. So after going to all of the gallery spaces and looking at all the window displays, um, and also seeing our artist pick, artist pick, excuse me. At um, the Art Annex or the Educational Annex, you can head over and grab lunch or dinner. Um, because you've done all that walk, walking and they'll be ready with, with some nice fish sandwich or a fish dinner. Um, and as you can see in the middle, we um, will have some um, t-shirts that have our logo on there for sale as well. Um, and you can see that there will be many awesome events on that day, um, many ways to engage with the descendants and also. Um, live performances. I have to say, the students did a wonderful job. We did design um, a mini curriculum. My um, my Sharila Kum Bonfield, the artist, is actually my sister, so we worked together to. So we worked together to design a mini curriculum and the teachers took what we had and really ran with it. And there's so many other mediums that came out of just our suggestion. So it's going to be a really awesome time and we look forward to seeing the community come out and having, you know, the board come out and see what wonderful work their students and community members are doing. And there's going to be a closing event. And it will be hosted at the Nautilus Diner. And the, the churches have also asked or extended an invitation that anyone who wants to come and join their service can. Just visit their website to learn their COVID restrictions. And I realize that I forgot to mention, but we are also hosting a U-BAM book fundraiser. It's an online event. So if you're tired from all the days events from the Friday evening and the Saturday. You can curl up on your couch and join our book party. And the book party will benefit Danielle Nebrus and her daughter's project that also came out of Community Conversations. They have a Little Diverse Library that's right in front of the Museum of Early Trades and Craft. I will hand it off to Danielle in a moment and she can share a little bit about that. But it's really mainly about making sure that our, our youngest readers are getting diversity in their literature as well. Different protagonists, different themed books that will encourage the celebration of all types of people. And so the fundraiser will begin posting on June 2nd. And will continue to post up until the 4th, not on the 5th, but then the party where you can actually start purchasing. Will be on the 6th in the later hours in the night. And you can earn points for giveaways. And also every purchase that you make will help to support the Little Diverse Library. So please consider that as well. And information for that will be on our webpage. So a little bit more, we will be, we have been in some local newspapers and digital media. And we're also going to be interviewed by the program through NPR called All Things Considered. So please visit our page, HiddenFiguresOfMadison.org. HiddenFiguresOfMadison.org, excuse me. And like and follow our page, the details are there. And please contact us if you would like to learn more about the project, have ideas for the project. Or you want to participate in any way. We would appreciate any donations that you have. So right now we have a Zelle set up where you can just use the project email. And just letting you know that we did specifically start with the black community. But where our hope is that we will also expand this to many other ethnic groups that are represented in Madison. Though they might not have a high percentage of demographics, demographics, excuse me. And so we're looking ahead, Native Americans, the Italian immigrants and all other immigrants that have really paved and shaped the landscape of Madison. And so again, if you have any suggestions or any stories that you feel like we should highlight, please also reach out to us and let us know that as well. Go ahead Deb. And so I just thank you for your time again. And I wanted to acknowledge Ms. Thelma Elizabeth Ellis. Deb, can you advance? I apologize, I'm forgetting her last name Sullivan, excuse me. She is one of the matriarchs of the Johnsons and the Ellis of Walnut Street, who have been there since the early 1900s. She unfortunately passed yesterday, excuse me. And so we just wanted to dedicate this entire program and event to her memory. As she is one of the anchors and the pillars of our community. And so she will be dearly missed. And so I'll hand it over to Danielle, who wanted to share a couple of words and to give her thanks as well.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Danielle Nebrus of 15 Niles Avenue. And I'm a member of the Hidden Figures Committee. And I'd just like to echo everything that Kenesha said and say thank you for the support of the Hidden Figures Project. It's been really meaningful to connect with the Madison community on a deeper level during this very difficult year. Thanks to the Hidden Figures Project. And to receive such support from the town and the borough has been very uplifting and affirming. So thank you for your time and thank you for your support.
Thanks, Kenesha and Danielle. Just real quickly to follow up, Community Conversations was in full force through about November. And then we had to break because of the winter and the COVID protocols. And then we've been focused on this, but it will be back either late June or July. So look for that as we come together again as a community. And hopefully with fewer COVID restrictions, we'll be able to keep it going through the winter.
Thank you for the great presentation. Especially thank you for all the, all the work on this. It is going to be an amazing story, all these stories. And as someone that has grown up in Madison, I've looked at these banners, they're so well done. And I know the names and, and know some of the stories, but not all of them. So it's for, even those of us that, as I said, lived here for a long time, it's going to be very educational. Excellent. Any other questions or comments from the council? And for the record, Bob Landrigan is still with us, but in the theme of broadband issues. He is audio only at this point because his internet has been having trouble. And also procedure wise, Kate, I see your, Kate Partley, I see your hand is up. We'll be coming back to a comment period shortly. And so that's when you'll be able to try again. And if there's no other comments or questions on this, we'll move on to our presentation by Cody on the marijuana legislation.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a one hour presentation, no, I'm kidding. Thank you, Michael. In November of 2020, the voters in New Jersey went to the polls and overwhelmingly approved the legalization of marijuana. The statewide percentage was 67.8%. Madison's approval of the same question was higher than the statewide average. 67.63% of Madison residents voted to legalize marijuana. Michael, could you advance the next slide, please? There are six classes of licenses that the Cannabis Regulatory Commission will be issuing to applicants that are deemed worthy of such a license. The six are laid out there, cultivation, manufacturer, wholesaler, distributor, retailer and cannabis delivery service. Most of the towns that are exploring this are looking at class five, the cannabis retail outlet. Next slide, please, Michael. On February 22nd, 2021, that's an important date. That's the date that Governor Murphy signed the implementing legislation to implement the approval of the referendum for cannabis. And that legislation identified that towns had six months, which would be August 22nd, 2021, to decide whether to opt in or to opt out or to what action to take. And if, for those towns that are opting out of a situation, they could prohibit all types of activity or just one or more types of cannabis. If towns don't act by that deadline of August 22nd, 2021, certain activities, class one to four and six, that would be everything except retail, would be permitted uses in all industrial zones. So if towns don't act by that deadline, automatically the cultivation, manufacture, distribution of marijuana and other activities would be allowed as permitted uses in all industrial zones. The retail selling of cannabis, if you don't act to opt out, would be a conditional use in all commercial zones or retail zones in a community. What a number of towns seem to be doing is because the casino, or the cannabis regulatory commission has just been formed and haven't had a series of meetings yet and have not implemented the rules. A number of towns are opting out now because they don't understand the framework of what the rules are going to be, as to where these facilities can be located in a community. And there's no five-year moratorium unlike on the opt-in. So if you decide towns are opting out, they can opt in at any time in the future. The flip side would be is if you opt in, you cannot get out for a five-year period based on the theory that the state has. That individuals would make, apply resources and finances to pursue a license, secure a property, hire staff. And it would be unfair to start down a road and then pull the rug out from under somebody. So if you opt in, you cannot change your mind for a five-year period. All of these actions to opt in or to opt out, you have to do it by ordinance, not by resolution. Next slide, Michael, please. So if you decide to opt in, you can regulate the types of activities that you, of those six classes. You can decide which things you want to allow and which things you want to prohibit. You can determine the times of operation, the location, the manner, the type of businesses. You can establish the penalties for violations of the ordinance. You could set a license fee. For example, Bayonne has set a license fee of $40,000 annually for somebody who wants to have a retail store in their community. You also by ordinance can permit consumption areas for retail licenses. So if somebody has a retail license and they want to have the product or smoke the product on the premises, towns can opt in to allow that. Under both ordinances, whether you opt in or you opt out, you cannot prohibit cannabis delivery services. That's class six, that's the sixth license. So if there's a perception that if you're opting out, you can stop the use of marijuana in Madison, that's not accurate because it's a statewide approval. So marijuana for those 21 and older is legal to smoke and use anywhere in New Jersey, all 565 towns. So the fact that a town opts out doesn't mean that they could stop a delivery service. And that's a class license, that's a bonded delivery service. So for example, if another community in Morris County gets a license, opts in and has a retailer. Our residents could contact that retailer, have a bonded delivery service deliver that product into Madison for use by one of our residents or more than one of our residents. And no town can prohibit that delivery of that product from outside the community into the community. Because it's a statewide rubric that once the referendum was adopted and the legislation was signed. The use of marijuana anywhere in New Jersey by 21 and older is allowed. So you cannot prohibit delivery of that product into the community. Towns, the last bullet point would be if a town previously had taken action, for example, Chatham Township. Last year before this legislation went through, opted out and said, we're not going to allow, we're changing our zoning rules. We're not allowing the sale or use of marijuana anywhere in Chatham Township. Other towns in Morris County and statewide did the same thing. The new legislation that the governor enacted basically says, doesn't matter what you did previously, you have to do it again. So if you opted out before, you have to do it over again. So it basically voided all prior actions by any towns to prohibit the use of marijuana in their community. Madison did not take that step at that time. We felt it was premature. We were waiting for the referendum to see what happened and to see what the rules are going to be. Michael, next slide, please. So if we decide to opt in, by ordinance, you can establish the fees and the fees are listed there. 2% for cultivation and manufacture, 1% for wholesaler and 2% for retail. You don't, you can't tax the retail delivery business license. The average in other states, Colorado and California, the model has been for a retail outlet. And New Jersey is kind of basing on that example of those other two states. Retail sales per unit run from 10 million to 20 million. So if you tax it 2% of 10 million, that's $400,000 a year in revenue to the town. And if you tax, if they do $20 million worth of business, that's $800,000. So that's one of the carrots that's out there is the revenue. It's not true net revenue because there may be costs associated with law enforcement and others related to the revenue. The other thing is in the experience in Colorado and in California, was that the revenue projections were grossly overstated. And towns made decisions based on the revenue stream and that revenue stream did not develop because of the tax structure in those other towns or other states. It was less expensive for users to, to purchase marijuana from the black market than to go through the regulated market to avoid the payment of the taxes. New Jersey chose a lower tax structure, but they are going to look at the fees. And people tend to, to make decisions economically in terms of the cost of the product and what is the least expensive way to secure that product. So you have to be careful not to make a decision just based on the economics of what could be generated. There's a percentage based on the gross receipts of sales. The payment is directly from the vendor to the town. The state does not collect the money. The town is charged with collecting the money from the vendor. And if somebody doesn't make a payment, it's the same as, it's a municipal lien on that business and the property, same as if they didn't pay their tax bill. So if that's a road we're going down, we'd have to set up a process on how to collect these fees and to monitor the collection of the revenue. Next slide, please, Michael. Applications get filed with the casino, casino, I keep saying casino, Cannabis Regulatory Commission directly with the state of New Jersey. The appointments were just made. They haven't formally met. Their first regulatory meeting is the first week of June. And in that, anyone submitting an application has to have those things that are identified in those bullets. Recall plans, safety and security, how you're going to handle cash, how, what's the impact on the community? What type of community activities are you funding? What's your mitigation strategy for any odors? What's the traffic plan? All of the normal things that you'd have with a planning application for commercial use has to be reflected in this application that goes to the state, to the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. And they have to satisfy that. Next slide, Michael, please. And once an application is submitted to the Regulatory Commission, they're obligated to send a copy of that application to the town where the facility is proposed to be located within 14 business days or 14 calendar days, rather. And then the municipality can determine whether it complies with the local restrictions on zoning, time of operation, manner, the type of businesses. That if you opt in, you could regulate the application. It's going to be a very competitive process to get a license. So for those towns that see this as a way to generate revenue, there's 565 towns in New Jersey. The state's going to be issuing 25 licenses in the first round. There's 21 counties and geographically they're probably going to want to distribute it. So presumably there's probably going to be one per county and one lucky county may get more than one. In Morris County, there's 39 towns. So the probability of getting a license is fairly low for the first go-round in terms of competing with other centers that may be pursuing this. So it's going to be a very competitive process. More licenses may come down the road, but the first tranche is going to be 25 licenses for the entire state. Next slide, Michael. The initial legislation has some restrictions that if you opt in and it's a retail location, where you can and cannot. So you cannot have a retail location, a grocery store, a deli, any place where food is sold or served, a restaurant, anywhere alcohol beverages are sold or distributed or consumed. You cannot have the sale of that. And then the last piece is probably the most important piece is the Regulatory Commission has not determined the distance setbacks from community events. In the first round, when, and also for medical marijuana, there are provisions that you have to be X number of feet away from a daycare or a house of worship, a school, a park, a public, a public facility. Things of that nature that they don't want to have the uses mixed with a community facility. The Regulatory Commission has not come out with those. In the past, it was 500 to 1,000 feet. So a lot of towns are waiting to see what the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, what the rules are going to be. And in the interim, they don't want to get forced into the program by not acting before August. So they're opting out, knowing that once the rules come out, they can see what the rules are and decide if they want to opt in. As I said earlier, if you, once you opt in, you're obligated for five years. If you opt out initially, there is no five-year lockout period. You can decide in three months, six months, a year from now, two years from now, as things stabilize, to proceed down that road if you want to join. Next slide, Michael. Questions? So if anybody has questions, we'll try to answer them.
Ray, it's Bob Landrigan.
Yes, Bob.
Yeah. So from what I'm understanding, there are still a number of rules and regulations to come out from the Regulatory Commission. We have to make a decision by August 21st. Is that when the resolution would need to be passed?
It's an ordinance, so we need to have two readings. So we'd need two council meetings between now and, for a special meeting between now and August 22nd. If the decision is to opt in or to opt out, you have to do either by ordinance.
And basically, Bob, just so, if you opt out, it pretty much is one ordinance. If you opt out for all those levels, if you opt in, you would have a whole series of ordinances because then you have the zoning regulations and other things you would put in place, the fees and so on. So, but again, all, all done in a very timely manner.
Yeah. My only, I guess what I'm thinking is this, presuming that it cannot be in a residential neighborhood, which wouldn't make any sense. Madison has a very limited area where they can do it on Main Street. I mean, when they were naming all the different types of establishments, I know they said you can't do it in that establishment. But in theory, if you had a restaurant and then a retailer right next to it, is that permissible?
That, right now, it appears it would be permissible as long as it's not within the footprint of the existing restaurant or alcohol beverage distributorship.
When do you think that they're going to come out with this final set of rules? Because I think it's premature right now for Madison to either opt in or out.
Well, we got to do something between now and August 22nd, otherwise we're in. If you don't act, you're, you're assumed.
You don't act, you're automatically in.
You're presumptively assumed that you have opted into the program. You're presumptively assumed that you have opted into the program and that, which we, one of the slides talked about, then there's conditional, if you don't act, then all classes other than retail would be considered permitted uses in any industrial zone. So the question is, do we have industrial zones? And any retail selling of cannabis would be a conditional, allowed conditional use in any commercial zone or retail zone. So if we don't act, those things could happen by default.
And then to reinforce again, if you opt out, you can change your mind. One of the, one of the things that, as Ray said, if you opt in, you opt in for five years, but also keep in mind that in that five-year period, if a license appears in your town, a business opens up and then a future council opts out, that business, just like our extra liquor licenses that we luckily have, that business gets grandfathered in. So that will not disappear if a future governing body decided to opt out.
So realistically, we have until sometime in July to make a decision as a council and presumably talk to the residents and then pass any ordinance. Plus, we have to have two readings.
Yeah, that would be, that would be, the latest would be introduction. As possible, really would be introduction, second meeting in July. I would not wait to that point. So. Yep, and Bob, since you're not video few, if any other questions, go ahead and then we'll go to Ostry.
I'm good. I'm done. I'm done.
Okay. Ostry, then Deb and then Maureen.
Okay, so I've been reading about the marijuana situation and the fact that the Cannabis Regulatory Commission hasn't come out with anything really specific to guide us, and we are under a time constraint. My inclination is to say that opting out gives us way more flexibility in the beginning here to make a more informed decision. And I would prefer to see an ordinance saying that we're opting out of this because there are just too many unanswered questions. And we only have, as you said, we may have just one meeting in July. This is going to have to be done in June, and June is right around the corner. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Deb and Maureen.
So a couple of questions that I realize you may not actually have answers to this minute, so if you need to get back to us. Can the local ordinance, can we can set, for instance, if we only wanted to do retail, we could do an ordinance that says we're only allowing one retail, can we set those limits related to schools? And all of that stuff in our ordinance? Even if the cannabis resolution hasn't set them yet?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so, so we can, we could set those based on, you know, obviously they put them in place. That would be the minimum bar, but if we wanted to double it, or if we okayed it and we we put it in place and they match that, that's fine. But it's, you know, just as we would have land, we would need to have land use ordinances in place. And part of it would be proximity to schools, parks and all. And it's, you know, one of the things to keep in mind in a four-square-mile town, that becomes a very interesting calculation.
Right. And then two other questions. The other one is if we do opt out, is there an implication, they were saying at the beginning, there was an implication that you were not available, not able to get any of the state revenue that the state was getting through their tax on marijuana, and it would only go to those towns that allowed it to happen? Do we know if that actually is true or if that's changed?
That is true. Basically, you're allowed to set a fee up to two percent. So most towns who are opting in would charge the maximum, which is two percent of gross sales.
No, I'm talking about, but the state tax.
They're not going to, they're not sharing their revenue.
They're not sharing the revenue regardless.
They're giving you the ability to impose a tax, which is unusual for the state to allow a town to impose their own tax.
The only sharing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ray, would be the towns and municipalities that may have been severely impacted by the war on drugs that put a high premium on minorities and that certainly would not be, you know, so Madison. I, I, my understanding would be a town that opted out falls in that category, make that benefit. But certainly Madison would not get anything from the state.
Got it. And then the last thing, again, you may not have an answer, is the whole medical marijuana. If there were people that put in applications for that two years ago or whenever, that never heard or are waiting to hear, does that have any implication? Whether, you know, could they come in as a medical marijuana place and also do recreational, that's the word I'm looking for?
They can expand their use beyond the medical. They're under the old rules, is what I've been advised. So there are pending applications. They were disputed. There was a filing and a number of people who didn't get approved in that round. It went all the way up to the appellate division and they sent it back to the state. So these applications go back two to three years and the state has still not made a definitive ruling because they had to start over again and re-rank everybody. So we're those people are going to be under the old rules, but they wouldn't be allowed if there was medical marijuana and now they want to say, I want to also add recreational marijuana. That wouldn't, they'd have to go for a new license.
All right. And then just one last question. Sorry. Can we, if we chose to opt out, like Ostry said, because of the time constraints, because we don't know anything to come up with something necessarily in two months. Um, can we put an end date so that we have to revisit it once? Like, could we say it ends January thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and we have to revisit it in the hopes that we know more information and could make an informed decision then? Or is it, you can't do that in an ordinance?
Matt just came out of line here.
You can't do that in an ordinance. What you would do, what all the towns that we've been representing, what they've been doing is they're passing it, they're banning it outright. And then they can revisit it as these rules or regulations are promulgated. The problem is, is that if you don't ban it and somebody acts on it, it's a pre-existing use, even if you guys ban it later on. So what most towns are doing is they're opting out of it right now, waiting for some more guidance on what's going to happen from town to town, et cetera. You can't, I mean, an ordinance can always be revisited. You can't put a definitive timeline in because next year a different governing body might say, we want to repeal the ordinance and make it all legal. That's the governing body's decision at any given time.
I guess that's, that's the question. There's no way to force that discussion to happen. It's just if they decide they want to or not.
Yeah, just to the side. I can tell you, in Summit, we just did summits. And Summit had an ordinance in place prior to the passage of the February two thousand twenty-one law. Their ordinance permitted medical dispensaries, not retail, but just medical. And the ordinance that they passed in Summit is permitting medical dispensaries only. The other ones are banned, retail, you know, any type of cannabis-growing areas, those are all banned. So that's what Summit just did, but all others are being banned at this time until they have more information.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, no, I'm just going to echo what Ostry said and that we just, I don't think we have enough information to to make a decision and opting out is probably the, is probably the best case for it.
Any other comments or we can talk about the action? Is it, so we've got two people that have commented on, tell us further information, it is probably the safest and best to do an opt-out ordinance and also recognizing that in a four-square-mile town, the, you know, I don't see manufacturing, I don't see cultivation or anything else. So we're, you know, we are basically just talking the retail and we can always revisit. If there's a comfort level, we will can start drawing that up.
Yeah, I, I think there's this comfort level with opting out. I mean, it seems to make sense. It's the most flexible. We can always opt back in if we want, based on what they come out with, you know, so. Yeah, but we're not making a decision tonight. That's what we were told.
Yeah, no, no decision tonight, but it would be at the wheels in motion. Rachel, then Ostry.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to caution us against the use of words like ban and safety. You know, I think we run the risk of deepening a stigma that's associated with the use of adult use of recreational marijuana that clearly the voters of Madison and the voters of the state of New Jersey do not necessarily in, you know, more than a majority feels like this is something that they approve of. And I think, you know, I respect that the, my fellow council members want to move forward with prudence to see what additional guidance will be issued. But I think we should take care in how we address this issue and make sure that we're I don't know, I think, you know, I'm just thinking out loud here about how the war on drugs and the stigma associated with recreational drug use has deepened a lot of prejudices. And I just want to say to my council, my fellow council members and, and team mayor that this is something that we should approach with humility and, and, and respect for differing opinions. Thank you.
And Rachel, I greatly appreciate the comment around not talking about banning, we should not be talking about the inappropriate or whatever. What we were talking about is that, you know, as far as retail businesses, if if you opt out temporarily or permanently, it's just feeling that in a four-square-mile town, it may not be the best match, but we are not making any judgment. And one of the reasons why some proceeds statewide is going back to communities most affected by this war is because of the stigma and the misuse of Ostry and then Deb.
So the state uses the words opt out. I don't think that is associating any negativity. It's, it's just that right now, the time constraint, opting out is our best way of then analyzing what is best for Madison. And it's simply because of the time constraint that we really, I don't think we have any alternative. I think the way we should go is opt out and then see what happens and, and make a more informed judgment on what we think is best for Madison. Thank you.
And just before I go to, just to reinforce what Ray already mentioned is doesn't, if Madison, if we change our mind later, we're not really out of dispense, not enough licenses that really is going to make an impact right now. In one of the workshops I went to, they, you know, used the field of dreams analogy, the opposite of field of dreams, where if you build it, they will come. Here it is, if you permit it, they may not show up because there's just not enough around there. Deb?
So just to, I agree with Rachel, and I think for me, I'm okay with saying we can opt out. I get the time constraint. But I would like to urge that we kind of as a council, not that we can officially do this, but basically say, once these regulations come out, we commit to having a discussion. I also feel like a lot of the other towns are doing, we need to do some sort of town hall with appropriate people that know about this and can talk to it, and we actually investigate it and don't just opt out and then kind of walk away from it and be like, okay, we're done. We don't have to worry about it. That we wait for the regulations. I'm okay with that. I get that. But that we actually follow through with a discussion and, you know, input from the town as to what they think. And I agree with four square miles, I think with regulations with schools and churches and parks, there's probably one or two spots in town that it could even go. But I think it's something we need to look at.
Done.
Just one, just me? Just briefly, I just wanted to let you know that I've been talking to the Madison-Chatham Coalition and MASA about this topic. And while Madison-Chatham Coalition cannot lobby for anything, or they'll lose their grant, they are coming out with a position paper in the next week or two. So hopefully we can use that as some input as well.
Thank you, Don. So, so what we can do is we will prepare an ordinance that will do an opt-out. And I, I think the, to Deb and Rachel's point, so that we make it clear, aside the fact that, you know, we're not using the negative language. I think we could also have a whereas mechanism, whereas the regulations have not been clear. And before any further decision is made, we need to be fully informed of the impact on Madison, you know, just, I'm thinking, thinking out loud and not doing very well, but something along those lines, just as a little reminder that we're we're, we may revisit.
Mayor, anybody can do an agenda recommendation at any point in time and say that they want to review it because an ordinance is an ordinance until another council changes it.
No, I, I agree. I just want to, you know, capture the sentiment of the sentiment of the current council as far as, you know, I think, I'm not going to speak for the whole room. But, you know, some, some may be comfortable with that it may never happen and others want to just have more information, which is what a good council member does. And so that's where we are.
Mayor, we can, we have, I have a number of sample ordinances. We can modify one with the warehouse clauses to reflect what the council's been saying this evening with an opt-out. But also noting that a lot of the, the decisions are right now are premature. So you're doing it to protect the town and give the town the most options when things become available and known through the regulations that haven't been promulgated yet. So we can take the model ordinances that we've developed and put in those warehouse clauses and circulate it for your guys' consideration.
That would be good. And has been stated multiple times, far more to discuss in, in the coming meetings and coming months and certainly for future councils. Any other questions or comments? Rachel?
I just want to say thank you, Mayor, for your sensitivity to this issue and for your commitment to, you know, hearing perspectives and trying to reflect those nuances in any proposed ordinance. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. And now I believe we were going to move on to ordinances for hearing. So will the clerk please read the statement?
Yes, the ordinance scheduled for hearing was introduced by title and passed on the first reading at the regular meeting of the council held on May tenth, two thousand twenty-one. It was posted and filed according to law and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I, I call up ordinance twenty dash twenty twenty-one for a second read and ask clerk to read said order by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating sixty thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a snow thrower and accessories for the Department of Public Works.
I open the hearing for anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this ordinance. Kate Bartley, I assume you don't want to comment on this ordinance, so.
That is correct.
Okay, I will, I will call you back up a little bit if your hand is still raised. So, so on being no other hands up, I close, close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance twenty dash two thousand twenty-one.
And council discussion. A reminder to those attending tonight, this is a, we're getting this almost at half price from another community that barely used it. And so this will be a great asset to the Public Works and was a big savings. See, no further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan? I don't know if we lost Mr. Landrigan.
I'm back. It's yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's really acting up here.
It's always good when it works. Hold on a second. I just opened, clicked on the wrong thing here. Okay. I declare ordinance twenty dash twenty-one a top and finally pass and ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. And now we are on to the second of two invitations for discussion. This is when you may comment on any topic. And again, the same rules apply. When your name is called up, please state your name, your address, and then you start your comments and try to keep your comments three minutes. But I will give you one minute grace and you will be asked to stop at four minutes. And now, Kate, you may speak.
Hi, I'm working this time. And my name is Kate Bartley and I live at eighty-seven Prospect Street in Madison. And I wanted to encourage the board tonight to, the council rather, to support Resolution one five six, supporting the environmental conservation potential of the Drew Forest. And I'm really here, this is actually the first time I've ever addressed council in the more than forty years that I've lived here. But this is something I feel particularly passionate about, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the future generations that will be growing up in this town. I think we have a unique opportunity as a community to help protect a treasure that is right here in our midst. Uh, as you enter the Zooker Bar Eden, there's actually a sign with a quote, uh, from Thoreau. And it's that in wildness is preservation of the world. And I think we need to remember that as a community, we have a, a, a wide responsibility to protect, um, a community resource that is really quite unique to our town. When I moved here in 1980, I discovered the Zooker Bar Eden, which was actually created that year. And I felt like I had stumbled upon my own Walden Pond right here in Madison. And I really want to do everything that I can, just as a, an interested citizen scientist, community member, and now a grandmother, to make sure that this particular and very unique part of our town remains as it is. And I, I think we also have to be mindful that we need to address this quickly. Um, echoing Tom who spoke earlier, I really would like to know what we know in terms of steps that are being taken by the Board of Trustees and the interim president of Drew University to sell any of this property and that we make sure that we're at the forefront of addressing this as quickly as possible. Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you, Kate, and thank you for your, uh, patience and, uh, coming back after the difficulty with your, the audio. And, um, we will keep, um, the commu- communication, obviously, all with group, but also sharing what, what is possible um, with, uh, the public as things come along. Now we'll bring up Eric Range.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Eric Range, Bello Avenue in Madison. Uh, thanks to Mr. Cody for that informative overview of the cannabis regulations. Uh, I think it provided a great context, uh, to the community as we continue this important conversation. I understand and support the plan discussed tonight to move forward with the opt-out approach to the recreational marijuana businesses in Madison for the immediate future, based on the current lack of clarity from the state. Uh, I think with going through COVID, we all know that they're not very speedy on their, uh, clarity of guidances. Um, but that said, I hope that once the regulations are clear, um, to Rachel's point, uh, that the council will provide a true up or down vote on ordinances that establish regulations appropriate to Madison and which are reflective of the public's vote on the referendum. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak, please raise your hand now. Seeing none, I close this part of the, uh, meeting and we move on to the introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for hearing have, uh, whoops, there we go, have a hearing date set for June 14th, 2021. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I, I'll mute myself first. I call up ordinances for first read, ask the borough clerk to reset ordinance by title. Ordinance 21 dash 2021.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $50,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for signalization repairs and improvements.
Mayor, I move ordinance 21 dash 2021.
Any council discussion? Uh, Ra- Rachel?
Um, I, I just wanted to make a quick comment about this. This refers to, um, improving our, our signals, our, our traffic signals and our pedestrian, improving and installing pedestrian crossing signals. And, uh, I think th- this is an important investment that we can make to support the design and implementation of complete street strategies, uh, for traffic calming and bicycle and pedestrian safety. Um, the police traffic safety division is supportive of, um, the, the proposed signalization and the traffic calming improvements. And I, I just wanted to give a little more context and flavor for, for what this kind of dry sounding resolution will do. Um, and I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Again, this is, uh, support some of the, uh, crossy signals we've put in that have been very effective. I, I feel a whole lot more comfortable one, especially by the junior school, when I can hit that button and, uh, cross, um, 124. Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ordinance 22 dash 2021.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $50,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for work related to sports fields repair and trail restoration.
Mayor, I move ordinance 22, there's 2021.
Second.
Any council discussion? These and the, the previous one are all part of the, uh, capital budget. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ordinance 23 dash 2021.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $37,500 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of firefighter turnout gear and to rebuild, the rebuild of engine number two fire pump.
Mayor, I move ordinance 23 dash 2021.
I second it.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 24 dash 2021.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $380,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund, the purchase of trucks and accessories for the Department of Public Works.
Mayor, I move ordinance 24 dash 2021.
Second.
Any council discussion? Yes, Rachel?
So as, um, Ray Cody mentioned earlier, this does include the purchase of, from what I can tell, at least one Ford F-150 hybrid truck, which is, uh, great news, um, to reduce our reliance on fossil fuels and move towards like electrification of our fleet. Um, you know, I know there were some comments tonight about how can we incorporate more product-specific information into this, uh, these ordinances so that the public has a sense of the fuel efficiency um, or other special features of this equipment, like whether it's, it's hybrid, it is an electric battery powered. Um, I was thinking about how we can do this and I just wanted to reflect back to the public that we generally are, cannot be too restrictive or specific in our ordinances. Let's say we give the miles per gallon of a Ford 150 truck. And then it turns out by the time it's purchased, the, the miles per gallon has gone up or down, uh, you know, by a gallon. Or instead of a hybrid truck, they can get an all-electric truck or something like that. We, we, we can't back wrestle them to a corner by putting that kind of detailed product information into the ordinance. Um, so I'm just inviting the administration to think about how, if it's possible, to share some of that more detailed information, um, about energy efficiency, fuel efficiency, or other special features in some manner outside of writing it into the ordinance itself. So just food, food for thought in future discussion.
Thank you. Any further, further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 25 dash 2021.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $18,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a light tower welder and accessories for the Department of Public Works.
Mayor, I move ordinance 25, there's 2021.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Uh.
Ms. Cohen?
There we go.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
And ordinance 26 dash 2021.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $50,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of materials handling bins and related materials for the Department of Public Works.
Mayor, I move ordinance 26 dash 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
We now move on to consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be refucked in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolution 145 dash 2021 to Resolution 158 dash 2021.
Second.
Um, one suggestion, um, I, I, I don't think we need a discussion because the public has, um, covered it very well, is might want to pull 156 so we can record, have that vote recorded separately.
Okay.
Okay, so we will, uh, do the consent and then we will move, uh, 156 separately. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
This is everything but 156, so I'm a yes.
But we're, yeah, yeah, you're right. Thank you. Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
And now I'll ask for a motion on Resolution 156 dash 2021, Resolution, the Borough of Madison supporting environmental conservation potential of the Drew Forest.
Done, moved.
Second.
Any further council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
I need to abstain because, uh, my husband's employed at Drew and following the borough attorney's advice, I'm accusing myself to avoid a conflict of interest.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Okay, there is no unfinished business. Uh, approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher totals?
For the current fund, $5,245,450.79. For the general capital fund, $9,263.45. For the electric operating fund, $662,803.51. The electric capital fund, $23,393.71. The water operating fund, $27,807.63. The water capital, the water capital fund is $37,270,000 even. Trusts are $49,151.96. The total is $6,055,141.05.
Motion for the vouchers.
Done, moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
All right, and there is no new business. And I want to thank, uh, the, we now have 11 left in the public of state, and it's very important to have longer, uh, than normal meeting. Uh, Bob?
I move that I will get my internet fixed and I move that we adjourn.
And I was just stepping out of, yeah, some of my, my, all, all in favor.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all and be well.
Good night, everybody.